Good evening. This Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Board of Trustees is now convened in a committee of the whole meeting on Thursday, May 16th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center located at 10300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, May 20th, 2019 regular board meeting agenda designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As the Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent, and we have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees and not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. This meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary, and that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in the Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. I would also like to take this time to recognize our community leadership committee members who are in attendance this evening, and we say hello to Julie Heinemann there. Thanks for being here, Julie. The recognitions, board comments, and citizen participation portion of the agenda will be presented at the regular board meeting on Monday, May 20th, 2019. At this time, we will proceed with the discussion portion of the agenda. The first item is item 4A. The Board will discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property pursuant to Section 551.072. This item will be discussed in closed session after the other agenda items have been reviewed. Item 5A, reports. The administration will present an oral report on the preliminary budget for 2019-2020 school year. Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Dr. Ogletree, members of the Board, and Dr. Henry. Karen Smith will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Dr. Ogletree and members of the Board, I will be presenting to you the budget for 2019-2020, the preliminary budget for the general fund. Some of the things that we took into consideration for this budget was the strong economy and the fact that we have low unemployment. And how that affects us is that we have to really be concentrating on what our salaries are for teachers as well as HVAC technicians, electricians, technology, et cetera, because we have to be competitive with the private sector. Also, student enrollment growth rate. The student enrollment growth rate is expected to go up about half a percent to a percent this year, so we've taken that into consideration as well as the opening of new facilities. And you may say, "Well, why are we looking at that now when we're not opening a campus next year?" Well, the reason is, is we always look at a five-year budget, and we look at those facilities that will be opening and make sure that we reserve enough funds to open those campuses. For example, in 2020-2021, we anticipate opening Middle School Number 19, and that's about another three and a half million in operating costs that we need to take into consideration as part of the budget. Also, the increase in property values. Harris County Appraisal District gave us our preliminary values at the end of April, at the end of April, and they're expecting a property value increase of about 6.6%. Also, we take into consideration, when we are looking at salaries, health insurance premium increases. The increases have come in from TRS, on TRS Active Care, and they're expecting a slight increase in all the premiums. But we take that into account because we would like, rather than giving assistance towards the health insurance premiums, what we look at is providing a little bit more salary increase than we would normally provide, because about 56% of our employees actually are on our health insurance plan. So to be fair to all employees, we take it into consideration in the salary rather than into the premium. Also, current school finance law. As you probably have heard, we're not real sure if we're going to be on current school finance law or something that's going to be part of the 86th legislative session. So we have taken all of those things into consideration. The 86th legislative session actually has had two major initiatives, and that's property tax relief as well as some sort of school finance reform. And so those have been two of their main areas, and then Senate, of course, has really taken something else into consideration, which is a $5,000 raise for all teachers and librarians. This legislative session will end on May of the 27th. What has happened is there was Senate Bill 4, and then House Bill 4 as far as the school finance, I mean, House Bill 3 as far as a school finance version. And so what they have done is they've each, originally, we weren't sure which way it would go, but they're actually going to look at HB 3, and then the Senate heard HB 3, and they made their amendments to it. So they are currently in committee right now, and we're hoping to hear something by May the 27th, when the legislative session is over. One of the things I wanted to highlight, I'm not going to go over everything related to the Senate and House versions of HB 3, but there are some major things that you probably have been hearing about, one of which is the Cost of Education Index. Both the Senate and House versions repealed the Cost of Education Index. And just so you have a frame of reference of what this does to Cy Fair is our Cost of Education Index is 1.16. And that Cost of Education Index is to help us or assist us because we have to pay salaries that are much higher maybe than somewhere in east or west Texas. And it's to benefit with that cost of inflation associated with salaries. Also, the basic allotment. Both versions have actually rolled some of the allotment, some of the funding we get, such as high school allotment, and they have rolled those into the cost, I mean, into the basic allotment, but they have also rolled that Cost of Education Index into the basic allotment. So the proposed amount by the Senate is a basic allotment of 5,880, and the House is 6,030. And if, just so you have a frame of reference of how that affects the district, what you probably have been hearing from the House is there's a gain of 890 per ADA on the House side, and then on the Senate, 740 per ADA. But what they're looking at is the basic allotment. They are not looking at the adjusted basic allotment, which is what the district, is how we're really going to be affected. For Cy Fair, on the House side, that's, it's really $306 versus 890. And then on the Senate side, it's 153 versus 740. So that just gives you a frame of reference. Also, teacher pay. The Senate has proposed $5,000 increase on whatever we had in 1819 and what would have happened in 1920. So what that means is we have to give the step increase that's already in our existing schedule and $5,000 for teachers and librarians. And so it only takes into account teachers and librarians, not the remainder of our employees. Also, the House version is 25% gain in the basic allotment. And if you remember, our gain in the basic allotment is not the same as everybody else's. And the way they're looking at it is the total gain in the basic allotment, not Cy Fair's gain in the basic allotment. And so it would be 25% of that gain, but it's really much better than the Senate version. And 75% of the 25% has to go towards non-administrative staff, and it takes into account more employees than the Senate version does. And then the other 25% of the 25% can be used as the district chooses. Also, pre-K. They both have provided an early reading allotment to fund full-day pre-K of .1. In addition, there is difference in the two versions between the current year values and using prior year values. The Senate version is wanting to, is using current year values, which is very concerning to school districts, because basically what they are doing is they are benefiting from moving funds from state funds into local funds. So they are benefiting from those property value increases. Anytime we have property tax relief that's swapped with state aid, what that really does is that puts us in the same situation as everybody else fighting for that piece of the pie, such as transportation or Medicaid that would be involved. And then prior year values, the House is keeping the current version of utilizing prior year values. But it makes it very difficult for districts to budget whenever you're dealing with current year values, when we don't get our values until the end of August, and we adopt our budget, as you well know, in June. In addition, it's the state compression of the tax rate of what we will be receiving currently. Our compressed tax rate is a dollar. The Senate version would compress it to 90 cents, and the House version would compress it to 96 cents. In addition to that, we also have, the Senate has a 2.5% cap on revenue added to that. So what that really means is that if we're, if the rate, if our tax rate cannot go up more than 2.5% of current year, I mean, I'm sorry, our revenues can't go up more than 2.5% based on the next year's values. So in other words, we may have to actually compress our tax rate even further in order to not have more than that 2.5% gain on current revenue. And what that also entails is there are districts that will have different compression rates. So you could very well have a Cy Fair and maybe an Aldine that have different tax rates. And that's going to be very difficult when you're talking with the general public and understanding that, because they're going to think the school districts are the reason for those different tax rates rather than the compression of the tax rate. In addition, the Senate version has some performance-based funding, and it's related to the third grade reading outcomes based on STAR. The net gain the district is estimating that we would receive on the Senate version is about 61 million, but bear in mind, a major portion of that gain are the raises to the teachers for the $5,000. The House version is about 44 million. The goals that the district has for, in building the budget, is to preserve the quality of instruction and services, also to have a compensation plan where we can recruit and retain quality staff. We put a high priority on safety towards students and staff and protect the district's operational infrastructure. As I mentioned to you earlier, the property values for the year are estimated for 2019-20, which is tax year 2019, they're expected to increase about 6.5%. And as you can see, if you look at this, the impact of what would happen with current year values, because you know, in the past, as property values go up, well, we are paid state aid on the prior year values which are lower, which means we would have a higher state aid amount. So this just shows you the impact of going to current year values. Student enrollment is projected, as I mentioned to you, to increase about half a percent Also, to give you an idea of how we're doing in paying our teachers for the 2018-19 school year, you will see Cy Fair compared to Aldine, Houston, Katy, Klein, Spring, Spring Branch, and Tomball. You will see in all areas currently, if you're looking at the zero year, five year, 10 year, 15 year, 20 year, or maximum, we are number one among these districts. And we very much would like to stay number one, because it's very tough to recruit teachers, substitutes, et cetera, when you've got low unemployment, because those people are going into the private sector where they can be paid more. So we very much want to be competitive. The budget considerations that we took into place for looking at this budget are provide salary increases for all classroom teachers, whether that be one that is, the district is allowed to determine, or whether it is a salary increase by the Senate or by the House. We would also like to be able to provide a salary increase to all other employees of 1% to 3%, and provide funding for increases in our software licenses, our maintenance agreements, property insurance, fuel prices, and other items. We also have some considerations that we looked at when we were preparing the budget that we believe are priorities. And we will come back to you, discuss those in June, depending on the funding available. So you can see what the cost of our considerations are. The cost for the $5,000 salary increase plus the step based on the Senate version is 45 million. It's about 40.5 million for the $5,000 for all teachers and librarians, and then about 4.5 million for the step increase for the teachers. And then part of the budget, included in the budget, is the cost of miscellaneous increases that are going to happen no matter what that I mentioned to you, like fuel price increases, our property insurance increases. The items in red, you will see in a few minutes, were taken into consideration in showing you the preliminary budget. The items not part of that budget at this point in time, if we chose to do it, and it stays as you're seeing it today, would be approximately 2.6 to 7.8 million for salary increase for all other employees. That's the 1% to 3% salary increase, as well as 2.6 million for the budget priorities I mentioned to you that we're considering. So here is a look at that preliminary general fund budget. As you can see, it is, the revenues are 986 million. This is based, once again, on the Senate version of HB 3, just the Senate version. And then expenditures would be 990 million. As I mentioned, this includes the salary increase for the teachers, but not salary increases for any of our other employees. That would result in us still having a deficit, even with the additional $60 million in funding of just shy of $4.1 million. So I'm available to answer any questions that you may have on the preliminary budget.
All right. We have any questions? Very, very good report. Tom? There's the push button. We have new microphones. Okay, that's, that's a little bit better. Have to put it right into your face. So on the budget, we have a $4 million deficit. This will be our third year that you have come to us to propose a deficit budget. The first year, financially, some good things happened, so we did not wind up in a deficit position. This year, it appears that the deficit is there. How many days does this cut us in our operating reserves?
Well, our operating right now, our fund balance is about $450 million, and it's a little over six months. So as you indicated, a year ago, we projected a deficit budget, and we did not have that deficit budget. This year, we're hoping the deficit will be considerably less than we hadn't thought it would be, because we have had, we will be getting some appraisal on prior year property values, or a property value study where we think we will get funding from the 2017 property value study. Also, our compensatory education funds were a little more than we had anticipated because of our CEP programs at the campuses. So we're hoping that the combination of those will help us not have as big of a deficit as we had projected, which was about 12.8 million. So we believe it will be at least half of that, we think it'll be less than that, at least at this point in time. So still taking that into consideration, if we went with just the 4 million deficit, we still should have, you know, right at six months, a little under six months in fund balance.
And so for the foreseeable future, can we assume that we can carry this deficit budget for the next three or four years?
Well, that's, that's exactly something, currently where we're at, we're good, but that's why we would have to really look at our schools that are opening and do five-year projections to make sure that we can afford what we are recommending.
I have a bit of a snarky question, but it has to be asked, and you may pass the microphone to somebody else. In the past, this district has been successful, not every year, but upon occasion, in being able to convince the legislature to tilt a little our way after they had spent decades tilting away from us. There's a gag rule that is being actively debated. It's already been passed out of the Senate. Does your budget take into account the fact that that gag rule may in fact be passed and will limit our ability to get our story out there effectively to counteract the political forces that have been against this district in the past?
Mr. Jackson, are you referring to the, how these certain lobby groups can no longer be allowed to?
Are you?
Are you, yeah, Senate Bill 29, is that the one you're referring to?
Correct. You know, because, for example, on a very innocuous basis, we're part of TASB. Bob is our current representative on TASB. Don has been. I have been. And TASB does in fact do a good job of just standing up for public schools. They'll no longer be able to do that.
Absolutely.
We will no longer be able to be part of a collective voice. And so as a result, once you lose your voice and you no longer have the ability to be heard, funding often doesn't go to those who are quiet.
You're exactly right. And one of the things that we realize is going to be a concern that if it's passed, we would have to come back with you and look at, is we know that our people are going to be in Austin a lot more, because they're going to have to be there listening to what's going on so they can advocate for the district. And we will be spending a lot more time. We will need, you know, we may need some employees to assist us with that, and we will also be going to Austin more.
Mr. Jackson, Senate Bill 29 is really a very troubling piece of legislation for school districts. And obviously, we're continuing to voice our concerns with our legislative delegation. You know, I could see that, I mean, we would not be able to, as our structure is aligned now, would not be able to spend enough time in Austin and be away from the district to be effective. I could see that we would have to probably hire somebody that would be full-time to be able to represent us as a district employee to be there in Austin. Just as a side note, though, Senate Bill 29 excludes charter schools. So they would not be under the same, as you put it, gag order requirement as traditional public schools.
Well, and happily, that bill is a complete travesty. And clearly, you know, I really think it's aimed directly at Cy Fair. Cy Fair is a disruptor in the public education realm, because other entities are not competitive with Cy Fair, and therefore, to make them more competitive, they have to be given advantages, and one of those is the gag rule. I suspect, though, that merely hiring one additional person will not get the job done for the district, because that one person cannot speak to finances, you and Karen, cannot speak to curriculum, as Linda, cannot speak to fast-growth concerns. Clearly, we're aging out of the fast-growth community, but it says the fast-growth voice can no longer be heard. And I suspect that if that passes, somebody will take it to court, because, and I'm such a geek, I've taken time to read the language. Well, you can read that language, that taxpayer dollars pay your salary, meaning you can't go unless you are invited to testify.
That's what the bill says.
So hiring additional people will help us understand what's in the legislation, but my reading of it is we can't even use Wi-Fi to send out messages, simply those that are factual. And I could be wrong. I'm not an attorney, and I don't read all that well. I blame my teachers and parents for that. But I do think that it can have a very deleterious effect on us and our budget going forth. We've been behind the eight ball for 20 years now, and it will further hamper us. On the teacher salary page, have, has your department prepared an analysis, which is kind of difficult across district, showing what a after-insurance cost of salary looks like, and are we competitive with other districts?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, we have, you know, at this point in time, based on what we're, what we are paying our employees. However, that, we would need to take into consideration, I mean, if you're, are you talking about, you said just the teachers, or are you talking about other employees also?
Well, it's, you know, it is up to you to evaluate best how to do it, but if we just focus on the classroom.
Okay.
Clearly, we know what the average insurance cost is for our teachers. And even if you break it into two categories, the within and the without, right? But have you done that analysis to compare with other districts? Because I hear all the time from
Yes, sir.
...teachers from other districts that they may not be paid what we're paid, but it makes up in additional insurance contributions.
Yes, sir. We actually have, and you are correct, there are other districts that maybe provide a little more towards health insurance premiums than we do. However, as you can see by looking at our neighboring districts, our salaries for the teachers are all, at every single level that we showed you. teachers are all, at every single level that we showed you, is higher than the other districts, or at least, I believe, the beginning salary we tied with two other districts, but our salaries are higher than these other districts. So we have chosen to do it through raises, I indicated, because about fifty-six percent of our employees are on our insurance and the remainder are not. So we try to do it through those salary increases, and it also benefits them, because that also goes towards their TRS amount when they are looking at their retirement amount. It benefits them in that calculation also, so we give it to them in raises instead.
Well, and, and certainly, I think it's, it's very significant. Teachers are one of the last few groups that, that can actually have a pension going forth, a pension that they can rely on, and the way it's calculated is based upon an average of certain number of years of highest salary, and if we can give that to our employees, that certainly will, will benefit them on a going forth basis.
And just so you know, Active Care One, which is the, sixty-nine percent of our employees are in Active Care One, which is the high deductible plan, and that increase for employee only was eleven dollars a month, which is about a hundred and thirty-two dollars a year, and about sixty-two percent of our employees are on employee only, which is the cheaper, obviously, the cheaper one for the employee.
Mr. Jackson, just to put healthcare costs in perspective, in terms of the amount of contribution that the district makes to healthcare costs to our employees, we spend roughly twenty-eight million dollars a year in our contributions to our employees to, to pay for portion of their healthcare costs.
I noticed that, that last year, we showed virtually no student growth whatsoever. The budget is relying upon about one-half of one percent. I also noticed that we have about a three-inch-thick binder in front of us put out by Pasa. So I can make an assumption, but I'd prefer to ask you directly. So for your assumptions on population, student population growth, does that take into account the information from Pasa, and are you, and, and they, they always have three, they always have a high and a low and, and expected, and if you did in fact take, take that into account, which of their three approaches are you using for your budget?
We took, and Teresa might can help me on this, what we took are the projections provided by Christie Geron, and I assume they were based mostly on the Pasa, I don't know if it was the low growth?
Moderate.
Moderate, okay, moderate growth.
So, so that would be the, the middle, middle number, not the high, not, not the low.
Right.
I have other questions, but I'll pass the microphone for now. Thank you, Dr. O. And Karen, thank you for a very thorough presentation, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
How, Senate Bill twenty-nine is infuriating, and I will just say, if anybody is listening to this, our senator from this area, Betancourt, is one of the co-authors of that. It would be very wise for people to call his office and tell him what you think about something like that. I know I have a couple of times. Just on this report, and thank y'all very much, you're always extremely concise, and it's just, it's, it's wonderful to be able to see us, be able to look at this, and we're transparent for our community, and I appreciate that. When we look at the proposed senate part of the five thousand dollar increase for teachers, if I understood that correctly, that is only guaranteed from the legislature for two years. They can't guarantee it any further. So at the end of those two years, we would have to take either that amount and put it into our budget, or we would have to rescind that amount and have to go back to their original pay. Isn't that correct? Am I seeing that correct?
The Legislative Budget Board has provided a fiscal note for the next five years, but you're correct in that, for a two-year period for the biennium, that's the fiscal note that we're relying on. Of course, we don't know whether that five thousand dollar raise will be, in fact, the amount that's finally approved, but
Right.
There are some concerns about the sustainability of the funding, obviously, and a lot of concerns about whether, at the end of that two-year period, or even the five-year, if it, if they do are able to extend that and provide the funding for that period of time, what happens at the end of that time, and when that funding dries up and we're not able to access that? So, yeah, it's a concern, significant concern.
Well, and bear in mind also, the tax compression in addition to that
Right.
That the senate will be having to fund, so that it's definitely something that we're very concerned about, the combination of the two.
And when we look at what the increase in property values, and y'all, we're mentioning it was six point six percent, but isn't that part of the senate thing, is to reduce the ability to accept that six point six, and it
You are correct.
Reverts back to a lot, two point?
It's two and a half percent
Two and a half percent.
Of the rep, the, the revenues, so, you know, if they looked at two and a half percent of the revenues, and our property values went up six percent, then we would have to figure out the tax rate we can charge, so that we're not any more than two and a half percent of the prior year, the prior year gain, or prior year M and O revenues.
Well, the, the two and a half percent cap or limitation on rev, is on revenue, on tax collections, and so regardless of what our property values increase, we would not be able to collect more than two and a half percent of revenue from the prior year. Now, remember, under the current school finance structure, any reduction in tax revenue that we receive, the, the state has to pony up for that, for that difference, they have to hold us harmless, and so we're not really sure how that's going to work out in the long run, but we expect to be able to receive additional state, state revenue for that. The problem is, is that, that's a tremendous cost to the state from one year to the next. In fact, that increase is, is projected to be about a billion dollars a year, especially using the current year values, if they do that. So in, in five years, using current year values and, and that tax compression, or that tax, tax revenue limitation, in five years could cost the, the, the state five billion dollars per year to be able to continue to fund that. So another, another piece of legislation that we're just kind of scratching our heads about.
Well, and our concern associated with that is we'll be like two thousand and eleven, where there was a deficit
Right.
And it affected school districts, and their funding was cut.
I know last evening, it was some, some of the trustees from Fort Bend, and their, their meeting was, I believe, Monday night, maybe, maybe it was last week, but they're very concerned that they're going to have a huge deficit in their budget, and they're trying to take a look at where they can cut right now, just to be ready. So, you know, here, we went into this session thinking, boy, education's going to get a boost, the, the legislations, but they, they've seen that there's an impressed group of people that want to watch them and make sure they're doing it, and then we end up with a convoluted formula again, that's hard to understand in the first place.
Well, and Mr. Covey, on top of it, they're telling us how we can spend that money that we gain.
Exactly. And so where did local control go?
Mm-hmm.
It's not here.
It's there.
It is. Okay, well, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay.
You have in here, funding for pre-K, when we take a look at the versions between senate and the house, does that show up in the budget as well, full day pre-K?
It's part of the, the funding, I guess you could say, gain that we were told we would have, based on the senate version and the house version.
So we have the cost associated with full day pre-K across the entire district in this budget, or we don't?
It's part of the, it's part of the gain, it's, it's part of the funding that we were received from the state.
Well, I understand it's part of the funding, but does it include the initiation of full day pre-K across the district?
Yes, and we are, we haven't, we don't know the full impact yet, so not all of that is in here, but we, it's pretty close to being there, because we're getting the funding for it, so we've taken that into consideration.
And when they talk about full day pre-K, we're really talking about those students who currently qualify for free and reduced lunch for, for pre-K funding?
It's the kids that currently qualify, we already get funding for half-day, and then we would get funding for the additional half-day to make it a full day.
Have we taken a look at what our costs are per child, and is that revenue roughly equal to, or greater or less than what our funding is?
Not at this point in time, but I can get that to you.
I would appreciate that, the, I share the concern that, that Bob raised with, with Stuart. Certainly, if the raise goes through, there is no doubt in my mind that the state will not continue to fund that with fidelity. I think it's going to be very similar to Proposition B for the city. Do you have any views that, that we could find ourselves in a Prop B situation?
Well, and I know what you're, what you're referring to is we may have this raise that we, we are able, that we are funded to give our teachers, but in order to fund, be able to afford everything else that the district has to take into consideration, we may have to look at what do we have to cut to make everything happen, so that's definitely a concern. And something I wanted to add on the pre-K, is there's actually a waiver for, there's a two, three-year waivers on that, so that's the reason why we haven't dug into it, just so you know, to the extent you might be asking, is we have those waivers. Something else to take into consideration that districts are concerned about with pre-K is the additional room that we would have to have for pre-K, that will not be funded.
And we do not have that additional facilities calculation in this budget, correct?
Correct. As I indicated, because of the waivers, that's why we, we haven't done anything at this point in time.
I'm, I am seriously bothered by the performance bonus. I've spoken about that on a number of occasions. Performance bonuses typically don't work well in the business world, and I see no examples of those ever having worked in the educational realm. It does prompt people to do those things that they should not be doing.
Mr. Jackson, Dallas is the one that professes that it works great in their school district.
Yeah, I was going to just say that.
And I
They're, they're
I don't know that
Supposed to be the model of this thing.
I don't, I don't know that I trust it, but yes, they say that it works.
Well, I know, looking at H I S D, our neighbor, they pioneered the concept, but it's clear from the written comments of superintendents that it did not work for them. So I'm not certain that the, the Dallas model is necessarily one that, that we should aspire to. Dallas certainly had many opportunities that we did not, that we did not face.
Oh, I was just, can I comment on that one? Yeah, I, like Mr. Jackson, really bothered by this suggestion. You know, we have to remember, we're dealing with human beings, and you're dealing with people who come to school with no food or no heat, and that's going to affect their academic performance. You have students with parents getting divorced, you have all this stuff, I mean, these are human beings, and I don't think a teacher should be based on what might be happening in her students' lives.
Karen, would you please go over the pre-K again? I thought, I heard you say that the budgeting for it would apply to those students who are presently enrolled in our pre-K.
That currently qualify for pre-K.
And they go half a day, right?
Correct.
And this would be a full day. So would you explain why would we not have room if all we're going to do is let the kids who are going half a day now go full day?
Because some of those rooms, we have, we, as I said, it's half-day, so you've got some there in the morning, some there in the afternoon. So you would have
They're using the same
Isn't that correct, in the afternoon? And so we would need additional classrooms to be able to have them all day, but we've been already looking at that, determining where we might have space and things like that, but as I indicated, there is a waiver that districts can apply for two different waivers while they're working through the process with pre-K.
The, the, the bottom line is, Dr. O, is we run two different groups of students through the same classroom each day, one in the morning and one in the evening, or, excuse me, one in the afternoon. So we do not have additional space at this time
That's correct.
And if we went to fully, for every student that's qualified, full day pre-K, I don't know how many facilities we would add, but it would be more than one to house those students.
Well, that's what I was going to say, would limit the, like, right now, our facilities, it would limit the amount of students that we would, we wouldn't be able to serve as many, I would think, because we have half and half, and so.
When, when would we determine whether we're going to apply for the waiver in, in that regard?
Well, once we see what the legislature does and what we can work out, I'm sure that would be within the, we will be talking about it through the month of June
Okay.
And coming to you and letting you know what the next budget we plan to do.
I, I would guess that, Dr. O, at least for a year or two, we would request the waiver, because it would take that long to figure out where we're going to house the students that we would, we would add, but.
And I believe it's two, it's two waivers for three years, isn't that correct? So we've got some time with that.
We're, we're not opposed to it, we think it's a good
We think it's great.
It's a good step, it's just gearing up for that. I think every school district would have the same issue. Most districts don't have facilities, unless they're decreasing in enrollment that are available.
And, you know, as you mentioned, it, the thing it does not take into consideration is our cost that we would have to take for additional classrooms.
And Dr. O, we, we, we've all been talking about this, and we're looking at numbers, and we're looking at enrollments at the different campuses, and looking to see, you know, where there might be some possibility for us to at least begin, add some, some full days as we start building it with those, with that two-year waiver. So looking to see, where might we start? And, and if you think about it, whatever we have right now in pre-K teachers, we need, we would need double.
Mm-hmm.
We need double the number of classrooms, plus, we've been doing some research about why, why some students are not attending pre-K, and it is because it's half-day. So we're expecting that also is going to grow.
And of course, for the viewing public, it's not just raw square footage. The facilities that we have to provide for our pre-K students are significantly different than the one through five population. You have, you have what I call safety corridors, I know Roy calls it something different, and Linda has a different term for it, but even the, the restroom facilities are different. So, so it's not just opening up more classrooms, it's not just adding portable buildings, there, there's more to it than just empty space. And I would suspect that the additional furniture cost is not covered in the funding for full K pre-K. You know, typically, furniture cost comes out from a capital perspective.
Right.
And let's not forget that we have to find the teachers, and they have to have the early childhood credentials as well.
I, I do, and Linda, Linda had a good point there. You know, we may be able to start growing our full-day pre-K with space that we may have available in underutilized campus, there's just not that much space at this time, but the long-term answer is you're going to have to build some new facilities.
I just wanted to mention that there are so many moving parts in, going on in the legislation affecting school finance, and the senate and the house are not, not worlds apart, but there are some very, very significant differences in the legislation that, that each of have, have proposed. And so that makes it a very, very difficult process to be able to come to you tonight to provide a preliminary budget, not knowing exactly where we're going to be at the end of this month. Hopefully, hopefully, we're going to be at the end of this month with a finance bill. But what we wanted to show you tonight was kind of a worst-case scenario of what it might look like, based upon what we know now and what we think might happen. We do, we do believe that there's going to be a salary, a mandatory mandated salary increase to our teachers and librarians. We know for sure that there's going to be tax compression and property tax relief, but we just don't know to what extent either of those items are going to have an effect on, on our finances and our budget, so, but we So, but we just wanted to bring to you, you know, kind of a, like I said, a worst-case scenario, showing basically, the worst case is the Senate version of House Bill 3. And that's, and that's what we tried to show you tonight.
Just to piggyback on what Stuart is talking about there also is, the great thing about Cypress ISD is whatever they roll out, we can weather. We, we have set ourselves up in great financial shape. There are other districts that, and you can look around the state, they're already talking about massive cuts. Our employees don't have, they don't have that worry. We're going to be able to weather the storm and hope for the best. But not only that, one thing that I think all of our people do, not just the financial group, but at our campus level, at our departments, is during the year, if we know it's a deficit budget, we look for ways to save money so at the end of the year, we actually don't have a deficit budget. So that's something we'll continue to do, even if we ask y'all to adopt a deficit budget in June.
And, and something that I do wanna stress that I failed to mention, when I mentioned to you about the two and a half percent revenue cap on the Senate version, I wanna stress that that's only on the maintenance and operations portion of the tax revenue only, not the INS, and it does not include any new property. So they take that into consideration, that we, if we have new property, that it would not affect that.
All right, thank you. This is, give us a lot to pray over. Hopefully, we can, hopefully, we can sleep tonight after this worst-case scenario. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now go to the consensus items section of our agenda. 6A, the board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. Any questions? All right, that will remain on consensus. 6B, the board will consider approving the minutes of the April 8, 2019 regular board meeting. Any questions, anything on that? We'll leave that on consensus. We'll now go to the non-consensus action items on our agenda. 7A, the board will consider the adoption of an order authorizing the conversion of Cypress Fairbanks ISD Variable Rate Unlimited Tax School Building Bond, Series 2014B-1, 2015B-3, 2017A-2, to a new rate period, the preparation of a remarketing memorandum, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. And we'll have presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Ogletree. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes to remind you of the bonds that we've sold and what we're doing here. Recall that in February, February 2014, we sold a total of $165 million of bonds, 40 million of which were sold as fixed-rate bonds, and 114 million, $680,000, or, yeah, 614 million, $680,000 were variable-rate bonds, Series 2014B. And of the variable-rate bonds, Series 2014B1 was for $37,675,000 and had a five-year term rate terminating on August 15 of 2019. Also, in November of 2015, we sold $352,790,000 of bonds, of which 143,745,000 were variable-rate bonds titled Series 2015B. And of the variable-rate portion, Series 2015B3 was for the amount of $45,990,000, and it had a rate period of four years, a four-year term date terminating on August 15 of 2019. And then, speaking to the 2017 bonds, in November 2017, we sold 184,725,000 of bond, and these were all variable-rate bonds, and they were sold in three different tranches. The Series 2017A2 bonds were for the amount of $61,715,000 and had a two-year rate period terminating also on August 15 of 2019. So to summarize, the, the rate periods for each of the variable-rate bonds, 2014B1, 2015B3, and 2017A2 terminates on August 15 of 2019. And so we were asking, we are asking you to consider adopting an order authorizing the conversion of those bonds, 2014B1 in the amount of $37,675,000, the 2015B3 bonds in the amount of $45,990,000, and the 2017A2 bonds in the amount of $61,715,000 to a new rate, to new rate periods of three years in duration, ending August 15 of 2022. The bond order also approves the preparation of the remarketing memorandum and confirms the appointment of JP Morgan Securities as the remarketing agent. And we will be setting the new rates during the first couple of weeks of August with the closing of the transaction at, or prior to August 15. We do have our bond counsel, Paige Abernathy, from Bracewell with us today. And Tim Peterson is here with JP Morgan. If you have any questions that you may wanna ask them.
Any questions, board members?
And I'll let anybody field this who wants to. Can you give us a brief update as to where we stand in the current interest rate environment that our bonds will be being sold into?
Tim, do you wanna try, try your hand at that? We are probably looking at less than, south of 2%, but I'm gonna turn it over to Tim.
Thank you, Stuart. Once again, Tim Peterson with JP Morgan. Really, to answer that question, the overriding theme in the market right now is supply. There's not a lot of municipal supply in the market, so we've seen a lot of cash coming in chasing a fewer number of bonds. So simple supply and demand dictates that rates are staying very, very low and very attractive for the district. I agree with Stuart's assessment. We're looking at right now around 190 to 2% for a three-year term for a soft-put transaction. As a matter, as a data point, we've actually seen about $35 billion of new cash coming into the market, which is the highest amount of inflows to bond funds we've seen since 1992 when we started tracking the data. So here again, simple supply and demand, a lot of cash chasing your bonds.
And a follow-up question, that interest rate that you mentioned, is that a true interest rate also reflecting all remarketing cost?
That is a raw yield on the bonds. So that's the yield to the investor. Any additional cost of issuance or remarketing fees would be on top of that.
And do we have an estimate of what that interest cost then would turn out to be if we amortize the all remarketing cost over the three-year period?
I'm not privy to the full cost of issuance, so I can't quite speculate on that.
Tim, I might be able to help.
Oh, hey, Tim.
I kinda snuck in, again, it's Terrell Palmer, a financial advisor. While this transaction is really not gonna be done until August, I think I mentioned last year that all of your professionals, because it is a short-term transaction, that all of our fees are, you know, greatly reduced prices for, for that role. And I would, you know, I, I've seen it before, or remember last year's number, seeming that it totaled about an additional 30 basis points was, was needed to be added for that cost of issuance. That would give you a true, true interest cost of those, of those bonds. Still, very, probably 100 basis points below where we'd be with our, with our fixed-rate bonds.
So this continues to have been a wise decision, both by financial counsel, but also the decision by the board to go forth with these variable rates?
Tom, you know.
Very much so, yes.
Yes, I, I think that's really my advice as your financial advisor. And it's, we're really not doing the variable-rate bonds in order to try to pick a market where we're trying to, you know, fix these out when we think we have historical rates. We look at it more about diversity and having just a very small portion, less than, less than 15% of our overall, overall debt. And especially since our, we have our new election of almost 1.8 billion, we need to have some of our bonds in long-term, some of our bonds in short-term. It just, it's just the way, it's my recommendation to many of my school districts, including, you know, Spring Branch ISD and, and Umbel Lamar Dickinson and Houston ISD when I was acting as their financial advisor. We, I just think that it's a very good policy, and it's one that, thank goodness, the Finance Department has embraced that philosophy as well.
So to summarize in my words, not only are we saving interest cost, but we are smoothing our debt requirements on a going-forth basis. Is that a correct summary?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you, you call it smoothing our debt service?
Right, the, the level of debt payments for principal and interest going forth.
You know, the lower interest rate, the way I would put it is, it creates capacity. We just had a, you know, large, you know, bond election, and we were doing, we were able to do that at a very low amount of tax impact. That is because we've been able to keep some of our bonds in this variable rate below market, been able to create capacity in order to be able to issue additional bonds in the future. You know, does it smooth out the overall debt service payments? Probably doesn't have much of an effect there, but it, but it does provide us with a lower interest cost that provides us with, with kind of free capacity for that next bond election.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just very curiously, you mentioned the $35 billion new monies that have come in, and that hasn't happened since, what was the?
Since 1992, we started tracking the data, and so that's a tremendous.
Do you have any idea why this has happened? I'm just curious about that.
Well, you have, you have a fair amount of geopolitical news and events happening. We have trade wars going on. The other thing happening is we have, this on the supply side of the equation, we're not allowed to do an advanced refunding transaction, so that impacts the supply side. But the cash coming in is really a function of, of some of the geopolitical issues. We've seen equities run up, the economy's been strong, unemployment levels are low, jobless claims are down, and obviously, folks are questioning, you know, where's the tipping point here? And what is the Fed going to do? If you'd asked us six months ago, we'd say absolutely, the Fed's gonna raise rates four times this year. And then two months later, we're down to three, and then down to two, and now we're neutral with the risk that the Fed could cut rates. So we're seeing, we're seeing this get whipsawed all over the place, but the overriding theme is it's very attractive for you. Can't try to second-guess it, don't have a crystal ball, but today, the rates are very, very attractive. And to echo kind of Terrell's point here, the diversification, we're tapping different buyers across the market on the short end of the curve versus the long end of the curve. And to the extent that we can save 100-plus basis points on this $140 million to be remarketed, you know, that's $1.4 million a year savings to your taxpayers.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you all, appreciate it. Can we move this to consensus? Item 7B, the board will consider approving the budget amendments for the period January 1, 2019 through March 31, 2019. Any questions of Mr. Snow? All right, can we move this to consensus? All right, 7C, the board will consider awarding bids and contracts and/or authorizing purchase orders as recommended in the posted agenda item. This is carpet and resilient flooring, Cypress Lakes High School Emergency Generator, event staff, contract labor, fencing and wire mesh partitions, portable building, deck, ramp, and walkway installations, property insurance renewal. Any questions, or can we move this to, there are two questions, three questions.
I just had a question about number four, the fencing and wire mesh partitions. And, you know, that's a big number, and just wanted to get a little more information on all that that will entail.
Good evening. This contract is so that we can start moving on the 2019 bond. As part of the 19 bond, we approve, or the voters approved fencing around portables and playground areas. We wanted to get a contract out so we could begin this summer.
Super, that's great, thank you.
All right, Bob.
Well, thanks, Christine, 'cause that was part of mine, so I had to think of another one, so. So this, this is Matt, don't go anywhere. So just curiously, do we keep rolls of carpet somewhere? How do we keep matching our carpet when we go to new schools? Just curious, I mean, I, I'd walk into schools and they've got the same carpet as school we opened a year before, and I'm going, where are we keeping all that carpet?
We have some attic stock in the distribution center and the maintenance center, so when we install carpet in our new school, we do get attic stock as part of the contract. But, you know, our carpet vendors, when we match up, when we have our patterns, we make sure that we have patterns that we can repeat throughout as we continue construction.
'Cause I didn't think we'd ever get rid of the blue, so I'm tickled with what you got.
We finally got rid of the blue.
We got rid of the blue, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, can we move this to consensus? 7D, the board will consider approving.
John, could I, could I sneak a question in?
Okay. All right, Tom.
So is that a yes?
How could we deny you?
Well, you could always say no. On our insurance renewal, how does that compare with the prior year?
Well, Stuart's out, can you, oh, Karen's coming.
Our property insurance renewal, just so you know, all it relates to is any increases in values where we've done additions, and, and that's the, or any renovations. So that's the only reason that we would have an increase is because of those, that additional value.
So otherwise, the rate has stayed the same from the basic?
Yeah, the rate's exactly the same. In fact, when we, we went out for RFP last year, we actually had a two-year guarantee on the actual rate that we would have, and it would only go up based on any additions or new properties.
Good, thank you.
All right, 7C is moved to consensus. 7D, the board will consider approving the use of job order contracting as the construction delivery method for the outdoor LED marquees at Renell Elementary School, Sampson Elementary, Goodson Middle School, and Smith Middle School, offering the best value for the district. Right, can we move that to consensus? No one's against the best value. Item 7E, the board will consider approving the construction proposals and contracts paid from bond and campus activity funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. They are the 2018 Carlton Center in Cypress Lakes, Cypress Ranch, Cypress Woods High School renovations. Also, outdoor LED marquees at Renell, Sampson Elementary Schools, and Goodson and Smith Middle Schools. Any questions, or can we move, yes, Bob?
I just think it would be really good to point out that the LED marquees are actually funded by campus activity funds and not taxpayer dollars.
All right. Can we move it to consensus? Especially since it's funded by, okay. Item 7F, the board will consider approving a resolution to join and participate in E and I cooperative services and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to E and I cooperative services. Any questions on that? Okay, can we move that to consensus? 7G, the board will consider approving a resolution to join and participate in the inter-local.